All right, we will call this meeting to order, starting with determination of the quorum.
Mr. Chairman, there are seven present and zero absent for quorum.
All right, next please rise for the Pledge of Legions.
My Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first item tonight is to approve the agenda. I'll entertain the motion at this time to approve the agenda that is in front of you.
So moved.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda, any discussion on this matter? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. All right, next is recognition and awards. I'm not seeing any here to spend, that's correct. And that then brings us to community comment. This is a time for the community to come forward and to bring any items of information or concerns to the board that they have. There's a limit of three minutes per speaker and fifteen minutes per topic, so if there's anybody in the audience who would like to speak at this time, please do so.
Hello? Hello, my name is Travis McCauley, I'm a resident of the city of Faribault. I would just like to make a suggestion on how we run these meetings. I've been to a few of them, I watch my television. We have this portion here where if a citizen wants to get up and talk, they can, I think that's good. However, once we get into the agenda, if there are questions that a citizen may have, yes way to talk to the votes that have had. City Council doesn't do it that way, or didn't. Gives the opportunity for me to question why decisions being made prior to it, bring up concerns we may have. I just think in light of everything going on, it's a way to do it.
Any other comments this evening? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. I'll entertain the motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any items anybody would like to remove from the consent agenda? All right, hearing none, we need to do this with a roll call vote, Mr. Clerk, if you would please do so.
Jerry Robichaud.
Aye.
Richard Olson.
Aye.
Yvette Martin-Thaler.
Aye.
Jason Ingrid.
Aye.
Deb Davis.
Aye.
Tom Casper.
Aye.
And I'll vote aye, and Mr. Chairman, seven, zero in favor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next is the Curriculum Committee Report on our agenda. Who is doing that tonight?
Good evening. Tonight we had our Curriculum Committee meeting, and Tom, you can cut in whenever you'd like. We started off with Todd coming and talking about the curriculum committee's expectations and about an ad hoc committee that he's going to explain, I think, to the board at a later time this evening. We then had Cheryl Curry come and do a presentation, and she was presenting on our FAST program. Our FAST program is Families and Schools Together. It is a program that has recently started in which we have our parents from the Somali population, the Hispanic population, and the English population come and learn about different things about our schools and how to connect, connect with our schools. Tom, would you like to add?
Well, I very much enjoyed the presentation on the FAST program, Cheryl did a great job. Very, I think, good for our parents to get a understanding of how class selection over the four, she talked in detail about the four-year plan and class selection over that period of time that can open doors to any student who would choose to, you know, want, make sure that they want to be prepared to go to college. So that part was very good.
And the program basically makes the connection, and it really teaches parents, you know, how to work with the schools and how to find out the information and gather the information that they might want from us and really how to work together. And I know Anne Marie tonight is going to talk a little bit more about FAST, and so I'll leave the rest to her, but just a, just a great presentation, I felt, tonight. Any questions? Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the Policy Committee. You have the minutes in front of you, and up tonight are a number of policies for rescission. Does anybody from the Policy Committee want to tell us about these, or Todd, if you want to enlighten us about these?
Sure.
Policies we have in front of us?
Yeah, we're, we're getting pretty well caught up with the mandated policies from MSBA and for schools. We're now looking at policies that are outdated and need either revision or need to be removed. We did take out, if you look at your minutes and compare, we did take out 304.9, 304.11, and 304.12 from the minutes. So those are not included in the agenda, all right? So your agenda is correct, it's just that the minutes don't quite match up. We wanted to investigate those policies more before bringing them to the board. But these policies are not, are the ones that we're looking at rescinding. They either duplicate, they're against state law, but they don't follow our guidelines for any of the other policies. So our suggestion is, is that you approve the policies listed under, be there to rescind from what we currently have.
I would suggest, if there aren't any objections, that we handle all of these rescissions in one motion. I'll read off what the, the policies are. Policy 200, Statement of Guiding Principles. Policy 203.1, Formulation of Policy. Policy 204.7, Quorum for Meetings. Policy 210.0, Continuous Improvement Policy. And Policy 403.1, Early Retirement Incentive Program.
Mr. Chair, on that, policy 403.1. I didn't think we had a policy with that, but guess we do.
Yeah, well, it was adopted in 1982, so I couldn't give you its history.
Nineteen eighty?
Yes, you can see.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think in fact, we've discovered that we can't have a policy like that, is that right, Todd? Thank you.
Yeah, the statutes are out of date, and then some of the, some of the information on the policy, we, we just, we can't do.
Yeah, so, yeah, whether it's right or wrong, it's just out of date and certainly not something we should have in our policy manual at this point. So it's time to remove it.
Well, I'll make a motion to rescind the policies as listed.
Is there a second for this motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to rescind the five policies named. Any further discussion on these items? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next on the agenda, items from the Finance Committee. You have minutes in front of you from the January 14 meeting. Does anybody from that committee want to tell us anything about that, that meeting at this time?
It was, it was a good meeting, Colleen tried her best to keep us short. Within an hour, she, she was trying real hard.
You didn't say she succeeded.
No, we did not. We ended up coming up with some good discussion. Further down, the technology update was, was one of the best discussions that we had to, to move us forward as a school district. The regular student enrollment, year-to-date expenditures, going over how to read the reports that we get for us newer members on this committee. So we understand everything a little better, was, was wonderful and helpful. And the rest of it will be coming up, and Colleen will address part of those. And I see we have our committee schedule on there again. I don't know if Howard wants to add anything or not.
No, I think you've got it.
All right, any questions for Deb, or shall we move on to the items in front of us? We'll move on into item 8B. 8B1, Consider Approval of the Use of Fund Balance for Technology. Who's going to tell us about that and answer any questions?
I can fill in, Maria is unable to attend, she had a family emergency, and so she had to go down to Florida. We're requesting, we're asking the board to approve to $225,000 to use for one-time spending to upgrade our technology for wireless. This is kind of our second step after we rebuilt the infrastructure for technology to move some of these things into our classroom. And hopefully this will be a step in the right direction to start moving us towards 21st century education, so. We've reviewed it, the Finance Committee, the Finance Committee is supporting this.
Any questions?
Let's see, Todd, if I recall correct, rebuilding then would be, any student could have a wireless device and it would be accessible, do we have that kind of power to do that after we make this upgrade?
We have, yes, that's correct.
No, what's the situation right now?
We don't have very much, there's a, in fact, we're probably the only big nine school that doesn't have wireless in their gym, so when kids come from other schools and they want to do their homework while they're waiting for their activity to be finished, then if they come to Faribault, they can't do it. But that's a small example of what we can utilize our, our machines for.
So every school will have wireless?
Every school, yes.
And we could have, every student have a wireless device theoretically?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, if I can follow up on your question about the wireless, I'm assuming it's going to have code, it just isn't open access?
Correct, there'll be a code.
You'll have to have a code to get onto the wireless.
Yeah, and we're required by federal law to have a filtering system too. Yes, yeah.
This $225,000 will bring us up to full access throughout all of our buildings, is that correct?
With wireless, yeah.
Wireless.
Yes.
And has there been any determination of sustainability with technology updating itself by the time you get it out of the package? At what point, or is, have there been any discussions about, you know, two years down the road, five years down the road, that we may have to, and I know that's hard to predict with the way technology goes, but this, this expenditure should set us up for two or three years, is that sort of what I'm understanding?
Yeah, the wireless is going to set us up for a long time, it's just the, all the other pieces that come with it that we're not quite ready for. And we've talked before about possibly doing a technology levy and things like that, that we haven't really had a lot of discussion yet about, but I think that's.
But I guess what I'm, what I'm asking about is the sustainability of this wireless system.
Yeah, with upgrades, I mean, the infrastructure's in place now where we could ask for more speed on the outside to come in, before we couldn't do that. And as we move with more wireless devices and larger software and things like that, we're going to have to look at our infrastructure probably every three or four years in order to make that happen. Yep, it's about three years for technology.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
Yeah, of course, I believe in technology, in fact, I, about a year ago, I brought up the possibility of a, a technology levy, you know, to bring us almost into the 22nd century. We're spending two and a quarter million dollars, $225,000 on, on the wireless, but out of our general fund, but how come we're not spending on, you know, bringing back some cuts? I guess that's the big question.
Sure. Good night.
Mr. Susskind.
Good night.
Yeah, this is coming out of the general fund, not, you know, it's, what could we bring back, that there was some.
Sure, yep. It's a good question. I'm going to maybe lean on Colleen, I'm going to get her warmed up so she can come up here too. I think philosophically, there's a difference between ongoing expenditures and one-time expenditures, and I think, Colleen, would you mind explaining why we thought that this was a good idea?
This is a one-time cost, so it's a good use of fund balance because it doesn't obligate us to continue to spend that down the road. Our expenditure budget simply can't support an ongoing cost at this point. So if we were to bring back teachers, we could only bring them back for one year, and then we'd have to lay them off again. That's the difference here.
So if there were three years, we're going to have a one-time expenditure?
I'm sorry, there, there isn't, there aren't questions from the audience.
I want to follow up on Mr. Olson's question, there's not enough resources in our capital to support this?
No, there is not, because we took most of our capital this last summer, if you remember, and did quite a bit of infrastructure improvement in technology, and so Kevin gave up some building issues that we do need to make sure we address this summer.
And it, and it's up to 225, it's not, you know, there's some things that come into play with that, and that's why it's stated up to, so if it doesn't cost that much, we're not going to spend that much.
Yeah, and to clarify that number, I know you did not intentionally mean to misspeak there, the number is 225,000?
Right, yeah, that's, yeah.
You just misspoke there, but I just wanted to clarify for anyone listening, because you probably don't have this sitting in front of you, the number we're talking about is 225,000.
And this is a one-time expenditure, that's not ongoing year in and year out?
Correct. And even in, in a few years, when we talk about increasing the speed of the internet, it's not going to, it's going to be a fraction of that amount, it's not, it's not going to be another $225,000.
And once you have the highway in there, it doesn't cost that much.
Right.
Except maybe five or 10 years down the line when cables and stuff get smaller and we downsize.
I mean, the 3G and the 5G might be out there by that time, or the 10G or whatever it's going to be in those, that, who knows what's going to happen? Maybe it'll be free. No, you never know.
Perfect world.
Yep.
Any other questions on this item?
Still, it's my concern, we're spending out of general fund, $225,000, which maybe could be spent on middle school athletics, and there was some articles on that, and, you know, whatever, orchestra, what, I don't know, what's the figure for orchestra? I know it's, this is a one-time expense, the other is ongoing, I know that, but I'm just wondering, because I'm, I'm struggling with that.
It's on the.
Okay, where's, where's the, where's the orchestra? Twenty ninth, I, yeah, automotive program, 1906. So I don't know, I've been struggling with this ever since attending the Finance Committee and heard this, so it's, I don't know, I just don't know.
You know, and I'll just express my, my support for this, I can't tell you how often I am hearing these days as I talk to our community, people asking about kids having iPads in the classroom and the technology that you're starting to see crop up around the state. And I'm wondering why we're not implementing those things in Faribault. The very short answer is, without a wireless network, that almost none of those things can be implemented. So without this, that technology that we want to start bringing to our classroom cannot even begin. And so as a one-time expense, I think it's vital for us to talk about being able to implement that, that technology into our classrooms as, as we begin to explore that.
Jerry, I would suspect that we're probably one of the few districts, if not the only district, in the big nine that does not have wireless access for students, for educational purposes. It'd be nice to at least catch up to some of them.
I think some of the innovative suggestions we also had about education, like the flipped class, or some of these ideas, where we're going to have a high teacher, or high student teacher ratio, we would need, almost need internet or wireless access to implement some of those. I understand them.
So this would help our teachers and students?
I would hope so, Richard.
Absolutely, that's the only reason we should be doing it, without question.
It'll also bring the possibility of having books online, so we're not spending hundreds of dollars for a textbook where we can get something online for 15.
I am confused, because I know that personally, myself, I can get wireless connection in a lot of different areas in the high school, and so that's where I'm kind of confused, is why are we bringing in more wireless when I already get wireless? I guess I'm confused about that.
Is it forged, I mean, are you just getting it on your phone, or?
No, it's through a wireless connection from the school, it says ISD 656.
Yep, a lot of those pockets are, yeah, there's, yeah, Maria could be very good at this. There's a lot of pockets in the highs, the high schools probably is well-equipped as we, we have, but if you go into the gym, you wouldn't be able to get wireless, I've tried it on my phone and I can't get it. Some can, some can't. But most of the elementary schools don't have it, the CREC doesn't have it, ALC doesn't have it.
The middle school doesn't have it, but like the computer lab?
There's certain pockets within each of the school, and we're going to have to probably, in fact, take some of those down and replace those with the new wireless modules that go up in the ceiling, that'll, that'll come out, but there are pockets.
No, thank you very much.
Just one comment, I find it interesting that January 28th in 2013, we're talking about putting wireless in our schools. We should have been talking about this five years ago.
Well, just to follow up what Richard said, why is it imperative now, why this year?
Well, we're looking at, if we decide to move forward with, and Mr. Olson has some really good ideas for us to work on a technology piece in the future. For us to go through this process, we have to know how some of these technologies work. So if you can imagine, if we want to do a pilot for flipped classrooms, can't do it now. So if we want to do some sort of proposal by next year with a one-to-one iPad or a flipped classroom, or any of those other different ideas, we'd like to at least experiment a little bit ahead of time before we can ask whether taxpayers want to have this, whatever the, the new curriculum is that we're going to implement with technology is going to be. It, it's just we're so limited right now that we can't quite honestly move forward with technology without the wireless, we're just at a standstill. And it's really hard to put an, put an exact piece on it, but if you go out in the real world, everything you see is technology. And almost everything you're looking at right now is done on the cloud, and in order to have access to the cloud, you've got to have, have access to either a 3G, 4G, or a, or a wireless network of some sort.
I know, I asked that question that Richard's asking at the Finance Meeting, and Maria was there, and when we got done, I was convinced that it was the right thing to do, but my, my memory fails me now of what I was, so I just wanted to check.
She probably did a much better job explaining it than I did, so.
Well, I did hear Mr. Turtle say that he thought 70% of the high school students have iPads.
Yeah, and that's, you know, that's a different philosophy that, that I have compared to some of the other schools that have done an all-out buy, one-to-one iPads or machines for every single student. I mean, we'll look at that if it ever comes up, but I think it makes more sense to do, and Maria calls it a BYOD, bring your own device. And then if we have to supplement some of the devices, it's, it's going to save us a lot of money in the long run, so. There are some different options we can look at that are not quite the same as what some of the other schools have done.
Any other questions on this item?
As a retired, retired 28-year member of the District Technology Committee, I'd like to urge that we pass this. It bothers me that we are the only big nine school lacking this, just as it bothers me that we may be the only big nine school without an orchestra program. But I think that this expenditure would open some opportunities for us instructionally, and unless we make it, all those other options are moot.
I don't think we have a motion and a second, so I'll entertain a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries, thank you all. Next on the.
Mr. Chair, when is this going to go in, that's, sorry, Deb.
Yep, we hope to have it in, actually, if, depending on how the money's allocated, probably by.
Well, she's going, she wants to start this immediately.
Yep, so maybe by the end of this, this school year, we can have something in.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Next on the agenda is to consider the approval of shared services with Northfield. We had some discussion about this last time. This is shared services between Northfield and Faribault for the Director of Special Services. It would include sharing the, the person who's currently our Director of Special Services with Northfield, Joe Hall. Todd, do you want to tell us anything more about this at this time, or do we just want to open it up to questions?
I think open up the questions, the documents are there for you to take a look at if you have questions, and certainly Cheryl is here to help answer any questions too. I think it's a, a nice opportunity for us to, to do this, to collaborate with one director for two school districts.
Mr. Chair, my, my concern is, will Cheryl be spread too thin? So you can put it more technical if you want, Jason, but, you know, handling two districts, one person, is it going to overwhelm her, or?
Well, I should ask our experts on that, their thoughts on this.
Mr. Olson, that is a difficult question to answer, and of course, I will be spread more thin, as are, we're asking many people in this district to be spread more thin. But I believe it is also, I should say, and, I think it is also a doable position. I think with the infrastructure that we're putting in place, the investment that the district has made in special education over the last few years has helped to put the things in place that we need to have in place in order for this to be successful. I believe that between, I know that one of the questions that came up in some of our meetings with staff is, will this put us at risk again for financially and/or with meeting due process or fiscal responsibilities? And I really don't think so. I believe that we have an excellent finance department in place, we have knowledgeable special, special education leadership in place, support staff that are there. Our due process monitoring and fiscal monitoring and auditing that we just went through was very positive, and we've already corrected all of the areas that we needed to correct, and those were pretty minor compared to other districts. Our due process errors were substantially less than other districts. And we had under 100 citations in our due process monitoring, whereas most districts have 400 citations. So I think that's just an example of the, the good things that we have in place, and my goal then is to continue those services and overseeing that, and of course, I'll have to have the assistance of two strong assistant, assistant directors will be imperative, but I believe that that is already in place as well.
I, I'll add to that, just because I think it's a really good question, Ms. Olson, and I've asked the same question. So I think we as a board, as we move forward with this, there's a cost savings that comes along with, with this transition, and cost savings is a wonderful thing, but it certainly shouldn't come at the expense of the many important programs that are running in special services. So as we evaluate this first year of this, as, as we enter into this, one thing that certainly I think we should keep as an option is, is some of those savings that are there, if, if it is found that we are spreading Cheryl too thin, and maybe that requires a little extra support, that those savings should be made available to, to do that, so that we make sure the support is, is there. I think in addition to savings though, we need to be clear, I, there's, there's, to my mind, there's much to be gained here by cooperating with the Northfield, there's many programs that we share, and I think there's much to be gained for, for, serve the majority of Rice County, and so there's a lot of county issues that we share. So I think there's much value there in addition to the cost savings that could be there, but, but I do think we need to be cautious here in having evaluation period. It's a good, I, I think it's a great idea, I think we should move forward with it, but we should respect that, it's a big change, and we want to keep a careful eye on it.
Is this a one-year experiment?
Right now, just so you know, this is just to approve us to collaborate and have one director, we, this doesn't, we, we'll bring a contract to the board, that'll be the next step, and then you'll be able to approve and adjust the contract. That'll be the next step, and then you'll be able to approve and adjust the contract the way you feel fit.
And so maybe if, if the board feels that we'd like to start with a one-year contract as a-
It's, yeah, it's all wide open right now.
There might be, I don't know, there's feelings on the, on the part of the board, but I suspect if, if both sides are feeling like it's not working, well, no matter what the contract is, we'll find a way to-
Yeah, and I would say you have to almost give it at least two years to really evaluate, especially 'cause the Dr. Lewis is probably gonna stay for a little while to help transition, 'cause they, Northfield will have to hire an assistant director. So I would say maybe a two-year contract at the, at the very least.
Cheryl, I've asked you before, maybe you could say at the public meeting is, uh, one of the concerns is communication with parents of these children, and that's kind of an important part of your job.
Yes, it is. Yes.
So how do you, how will we have our parents served with you being only part-time here?
Well, I, I believe I will be available. You know, as, as things arise, there'll have to be that flexibility between the two districts to respond to parent concerns and administrator concerns, if there's staff concerns or concerns of situations that are going on with, with students and programs. I will, I will need to be available for them. I believe that I, I will be, and I, and it's, it's an important thing to have that, that clear communication. We'll continue with the special advisory councils in both districts. Maybe moving toward one advisory council if that, if that's something, you know, down the road that we could look at. I believe there's different avenues to do that too. I don't believe that it's, that I have to be the first person as well as building those systems of that parents can, there's problem-solving strategies that can be used at the building level, at the place where those issues are arising too.
And your assistants could, are they gonna be able to do some of that?
Yes, and that's why it's important to have the assistant directors. They can be, when I'm not available in the district, they would be the go-to person during that time.
Mr. Chair, I know Cheryl is far more competent than the former director that was here back in the eighties and worked between two districts, and I know that Cheryl will provide the shared service at a very high level of competency, so I respect what she's able to do. Kathy's fully aware of whom I'm talking about.
I was a children's mental health case manager during that time, and I thought it worked really well to have the cooperative, because it is Rice County that you're serving and you have a lot of overlap. I thought it worked really well, even with that director.
For those who may not know, Cheryl is speaking up himself and not, not bashing somebody you work for.
Blasphemying myself.
Any further comments? I don't believe we have a motion or a second at this time. I'll entertain a motion or a second to approve.
I'll move approve.
A motion, is there a second to approve? We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Cheryl. Uh, next item is to consider the approval of early retirement incentive for teachers. Who's gonna tell us about this, this item?
Maybe, Nicole, would you mind summarizing what the early retirement incentive is for teachers, and then we can have a discussion after that. I think that's good that people understand what the, the print is saying within the early retirement incentive.
Excuse me. Okay, so we have two different options that we were looking at for current FEA members. The first option would be for those who meet the eligibility requirements that are outlined under option A by this year. This would be for people who would, who would consider retiring at the end of this year. Option B would be for those who meet those eligibility requirements again, but they may not meet the age requirement until the end of next year. So option B would be for someone who could not necessarily, who could not retire this year, but, but could take a leave of absence until they meet eligibility requirements, and then at that point in time retire. So for example, if a, if a person is going to meet the eligibility requirements by November first, instead of them starting the year with us and then retiring on November first, they would instead be granted a leave of absence for the entire year. We would hire a replacement for them for the entire year rather than in the middle of the year. That about sums it up. The eligibility requirements in here that they would have to be fifty-five years of age by June thirtieth of this year for option A. They have to have taught with us for ten years. They have to be currently teaching this year. And they have to be on step fourteen of the master agreement. Option B has the same eligibility requirements, however, they meet the age requirement of fifty-five by June thirtieth of next year rather than this year.
Nicole, what does this make possible for us?
Excuse me, it's really hard to put a, a number to it. We, just because we don't know who all out there is potentially gonna take advantage of this, it's really hard to determine who would replace them or how that would offfall. We're looking at it more as a, as a savings of a position rather than financial. We know the financial savings will be there, we just don't know the number, so it's, it's kinda hard to explain in that sense. However, we know that it will save some teachers. It is a little bittersweet for us because we could potentially, we will be losing some seasoned staff members who are mentors, who are younger teachers and are good, well-respected staff members. However, at the same time, it will be saving some younger staff members who have their whole career to grow with us.
So it could mean that we could save half a dozen or so of our good young teachers.
Potentially.
And then the cost savings, is that, that doesn't just happen in the first year, that continues to happen.
It would, right, it could happen for quite a few years.
Question. The, the, the option available, I thought there was something you could not have age indicated in an early retirement because it became age discriminatory. I know you can do years of experience, but I thought there was something years ago that said age could not be part of an early retirement incentive. And I may be incorrect, Nicole, but I know that there was several districts years ago that had some problems because EEO came back and said you cannot have age in your early retirement.
You know, I, I haven't heard that. We did send it to TRA to have them look at the language, and they didn't see any problems with it, but-
Let me, the, one of the things that I know that the EEOC was very concerned about was, a lot of districts had a sliding scale for age for retirement incentives. So for example, if you were sixty, they paid you so much. If you were sixty-two, they paid you so much. If they're fifty-seven, and so on.
If they're less, the older you got.
Yeah, and that was to be taken out of all contracts at that time. That was back in, I think, the late eighties. So I think this is okay though. I think TRA's looked at it, and it should be all right as it stands. And the other thing, just one other, maybe you already said this, Nicole, the fifteen thousand dollars that the incentive costs for, where would that be put into?
This would go into a healthcare savings plan for the teachers, so that they could use it for health insurance premiums or any type of health-related expenses. That's the, that's kind of the biggest thing that we hear from teachers is that they can't retire because healthcare is so expensive, so this is a way to try and help offset some of their healthcare costs.
Mr. Chair, are we voting on to accept option A or B? Or could you explain that?
Oh, depending on the vote in the motion, you'd be, option, the, the teacher would be able to choose either option A or B.
Okay, not, we're not choosing.
No.
So on option A, you are an active teacher, right? You're an active teacher here. Now on option B, you could right now be on a leave of absence, right?
No.
Nope.
Option B, you would still have to be a, a current active teacher, teaching this year. The leave of absence would be for next year. For if you, if you know in the back of your mind you're going to retire sometime next year and want to, want to avoid retiring sometime mid-year and having that disruption in the classroom, then we would allow them to take a leave of absence next year.
Can anybody on leave of absence take advantage of this right now?
No, they have to be currently actively teaching this year.
That's my, all of a sudden they're in leave of absence, all of a sudden they see fifteen thousand, they're not actively teaching. Right now, all of a sudden they come out and they get fifteen thousand.
Right, and under this-
Does that make sense to-
Yeah, I see your concern, but I think this is not, that's not the case.
Okay, then I was, then I misread that.
I think, yeah, what I think this is saying is, just to make sure we're clear on this, uh, this point, which I think is an important one, is that this would mean somebody has not yet met the eligibility requirements for retiring, but they may within the year.
Exactly.
If I understand this, and so rather than needing to work that year, we would allow them to be on a leave of absence, an unpaid leave of absence for that year, and then retire in a, in a year. Is that, clarify? So they aren't currently, but they, they would be.
So we wouldn't, we could fill up as a new teacher at the, right at the beginning of the year.
So we would still save their salary because they would be replaced by somebody with a, a, a newer teacher with a lower salary.
How will this affect if they decide middle of the year, you know, with their kids, to retire? Do they have to go to the end of the year instead of getting a new teacher?
I don't know.
You know, it's people, you know, November first, I can retire, well, you know, third grade teacher, whatever. That sort of disrupts the classroom. Does this have anything to do with that?
Um, this would, the, our hope is that that would, this would try and eliminate some of that. We, we certainly can't prevent it, but it might eliminate some of that if we allow them to take a leave of absence rather than coming back for a few months and then retiring.
Basically, that's what option B is for.
Yes.
Okay. So it's less disruptive to the kids, right?
Right, yes.
Okay, okay, okay. Because they could just not start the year, collect their fifteen thousand dollars, uh, HR, Health SS, HSA? HSA thing, and we would hire a new teacher for, beginning in the fall. So rather than leaving, although as I'm understanding, that still could happen, but this might preclude some of that.
Right, yes.
And if somebody would start the year and then decide to, that it was a bad idea, they don't qualify for this, right? Because they have to, you have to be notified by March fifteenth in both cases?
Yes, March fifteenth of the year, they would have to have that decision already made, so they couldn't come back next year and, in retirement year.
Gives them an incentive not to come back in the fall, and we could hire a new teacher from the very beginning.
What does the representative of the teachers, FEA, say about this?
Well, um, they, you know, court before the har, half, cart before the horse, or horse before the cart. We're, we wanted to present you something that we felt that the teachers' association would take advantage of, and so we did ask them about this, and they're in support of this. The piece that they're a little concerned about is how the board is going to view this, this piece, and both, I guess the administration probably has the same concern too. We would prefer a unanimous vote on this particular item, simply because we wanna avoid some of the politics that could occur as a result of this fifteen thousand dollar piece, which is not meant to be a bonus. It's meant to be an incentive and put into an HSA account and save the district money and some staff members. So that's the view of both the union administration. On the flip side, if they, if this, if it does, to all the board members appear to be, or or to any of the board members to appear to be a bonus, then we are, again, on the same page with the union and, and with the administration, that we would rather not see it passed. Quite honestly, we want this to be a team decision, and this is very important for, I believe anyways, you guys vote, I don't. I believe it's very important that all board members are on the same page with this one.
This sunsets June thirtieth, right? That's what I'm reading? Just a one-shot deal?
Absolutely.
The next year, maybe we could or could not have the same program, right? Whatever, maybe we got all young teachers and no one planned to retire.
So Richard, what do you think?
Well, that's why I asked the questions. I, I, my concern was somebody was on leave of absence and they saw fifteen thousand dollars coming their way.
Right.
Then all of a sudden, they, they're, right now they're leave, they're not even working here. And they come out and grab their fifteen thousand. You know what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
That's what's my impression.
So would you be willing to make a motion on this one?
I would make a motion. I just made a motion.
Mr. Olson makes a motion to approve?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussions?
Well, I like the idea of being able to save some of these good young teachers that we have. I, I know we'll miss some, some veteran teachers. But I sure hate to lose those good young ones. And, and I think about, when we first talked about it at finance, I was only thinking about the savings the first year, but then it occurred to me that we'll save money for several years while this goes on, so then it starts to make even more sense.
Mr. Chair, then after March fifteenth, we should be able to get a report.
Yes, you will.
Okay, I'll, who took advantage of this, cost and who and what, right?
Yep.
'Cause when they say you retire, you, you will retire, right? You can't grab the money and-
Absolutely.
Okay.
So in some sense, June thirtieth is not the, uh, that's the effective date, but March fifteenth is really the-
You can't, they come after that, forget it.
You would have to re-approve them, but I mean, if, as soon as you approve somebody's retirement, I, I don't think that would ever come back.
And to clarify that, I assume that that timeline is chosen because March and April is when we need to be finalizing decisions on, we, we've already alerted teachers who, who are likely to be on a list, but if we can bring them back, we wanna be doing that in March and April, and so I assume that's why this timeline, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's why I'm asking a lot of questions.
No, that's, that's good questions. All right. Any further comments, questions?
Think you need a second.
Can we have a second?
Need a second, okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you all. Uh, item number eight B, eight, eight B four, consider approval of adding back three elementary staff. Todd, you wanna talk us through this?
Yep, I can start it, and then I might lean on Colleen again a little bit.
Sure.
And you guys can certainly ask too. The, our compensatory dollars are not known until December after the child count is out there, and our compensatory dollars are based on the, our free and reduced lunch count. Parents file an application, and then they qualify either for, their kids can have a free lunch, or they can have a reduced price lunch. But based on those applications, the school district gets some extra money, called compensatory aid. As a result, our compensatory aid is more than it was last year. In fact, it's quite a bit more, which is a good thing and a bad thing. You know, you get a bowl of rice, but it does allow us to hire some more staff. And if, again, if you want the total dollar amounts, you can ask Colleen. I don't have them down in front of me right now, but it does allow us to add about three more teachers. I think most priorities, and I talked about this a little bit last time around, is that the, the elementary classrooms in the primary grades really need to have that low class size ratio in the second grade. So we are suggesting that the board approve three more elementary teachers. Second grade or third grade teachers, depending on where the appropriate places for the low class sizes would be to reinstate and to use as compensatory dollars, which is really relative for that, that dollar usage. So that's what the proposal is, and like I said, if you wanna ask Colleen, all right, more questions, go ahead and fire away.
What's the figure?
What's the figure?
The, how much more?
Okay, you have an attachment on your agenda? And that's an aid report. You can see there, the, if you look to the bottom right, the revenue for next year for compensatory is three million eight hundred eighty-seven thousand. Do you see that? Yep. Then beneath there on the left, our current compensatory revenue is three point two- Yep, then beneath there on the left, our current compensatory revenue is three point two million. And the difference then shows you the increase of six hundred and twenty-four thousand, that's what we're going to get in additional compensatory revenue for next year. Now, you've already obligated some of that, remember, there's a little note down there beneath the increase that we did, we did approve the additional English language learner staff for this year and for next year and part of that. We knew that this increase was coming, we just didn't have a final number back when we talked about that. So that has already been approved, but now that we've got the final number, we feel pretty comfortable bringing back three of those teachers in the second grade with this.
What about the rest of the money?
Well, the rest of it is there, then to be used for, um, other programs and that, and the one thing that always makes me nervous, I, you know, I'm very conservative, is we're looking at one piece of our budget here. And you've got to look at it in the total picture, that's why I think, I, I'm not comfortable going any further than this until we have the whole budget picture for next year, because this might be able to be used in another way if we lose some state aid or have decreases somewhere else. But I'm very comfortable doing the EL staff and the three teachers, but beyond that, I think we need to wait now for the, for the big picture.
Is there a, a rationale for making this particular decision at this particular time? Uh, with the idea that we have an ad hoc committee, uh, looking at possible add backs if we get some additional state funding or other revenue sources? Why should we separate those into this and that? And is there, is there a rationale for doing so?
The compensatory revenue that we get, it's defined in statute how you can use that money. So you can't just, we could not use this money for orchestra, for FIAID, for art, for athletics. It's very defined, it has to be used to educate kids that are not reaching grade level. And so the thought process is that we need to catch kids early, and we're very uncomfortable with cutting those teachers at second grade. That was one thing that made.
No, as, yeah.
And I'll speak a little bit for Todd there, but.
As we all are, I, my, my question regarded the rationale for treating this somewhat separately than
Yes.
the, the potential add backs that the ad hoc committee is going to be looking at.
Right, yeah, this is, this is a dedicated revenue, so you, you can't just use it for anything, but this is a perfect use of this revenue.
According to my calculation, we have, after those two deductions, we have three hundred and forty-four thousand left.
Right.
Give or take.
Right.
And could we add, like, reading teachers at the elementary? I think, uh, Jerry said K through three is very critical for reading.
We certainly could look at some of that stuff, but again, I want you to look at the big picture, because again, this is just one piece of revenue. So we need to look at all our revenues and all our projected expenses for next year before we make decisions about how to use that.
Well, a- as a member of that ad hoc committee, uh, could you forward me some guidelines as to the, the type of expenditures that this money can be used for? So that we can look at that in addition to other revenue sources that may become available?
Yep, I can send you, it's stat, it's written pretty easily in statute, so I can send you the statute reference.
Okay, thank you.
Would you mind sending to all the board members?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
The basic premise behind it is that it has to be used to bring kids up to grade level, so it's really for student achievement and.
So when would you get comfortable using that, the remainder of the money, at what point are you?
I'd be really comfortable when the legislature was done.
At that time, if the ad hoc committee's meeting, then you could use the funds.
Yes, but we, we can have some early projections that, you know, again, I'll be conservative about it, but we can have some early projections on where we think that's going in some different scenarios, so that you can see what might happen. But obviously, when we get to the budget in May and June, hopefully we'll have a, a really good idea. But I can get, I can get pretty comfortable with some scenarios.
Um, I think these, uh, both, uh, um, Richard and, and Tom's questions are both very good ones for us to think about as, as a board. Um, uh, I, uh, I don't think anybody would argue that we, if this money is coming in, we shouldn't be using, it shouldn't go into savings. I think we should be using it for programming, so I don't, I think everybody would argue that. The question I think would only be towards Tom's and of, of, uh, when would we make the decision that that should go towards? Um, and I think Tom raises a really good point of, of when and why we're separating this at, at this moment. Um, and I'm, I'm still not sure for myself how comfortable I am with, with that at this, at this moment. Um, and I guess I'll just say, um, if you ask me what my personal opinion is, I think the first thing we need to add back is second grade teachers. But we have an ad hoc committee whose job it is to, to look at this, um, um, and, and so I'm a little worried about short-circuiting that as well. Um, I'm not overly concerned, um, so I'd like other feedback from other board members on this, um, this item, whether or not we feel like this is now circumventing the ad hoc committee we've already put together, um, making this decision, or is this a reasonable one? It strikes me that one advantage of doing this now is we have three teachers who, at this moment, are, are, are quite certain they'll be losing their jobs, and to not do that would be a nice thing, but, Mr. Suss.
Yeah, just to keep in mind that the quicker we make some of these decisions with staff, the less likely they're going to find other jobs.
Yeah, this is a, this is a good point.
Mr. Chair, I, I, I agree with the, the comments that have been made. I'm very concerned about piecemealing things, and it seems to be what we're doing right now when, in respect to the fact that there has been a task force established or an ad hoc committee to take a look at add backs. And now we're adding back something without that committee having a chance to really look at, uh, what's going on. And I, we're looking at it next year, we're not looking at it this year. So I know there's some urgency because of staff looking for jobs, but I think if we, if we delay this, by the way, I totally agree, you know, if we're going to add back second grade, primary, if we're going to deal with reading, it's critical. No, no dispute about that at all. But I think in order for the, uh, ad hoc committee to have a chance to review this, um, and they're, we don't have to act on it tonight, I think we can delay this for, um, another meeting. I'd like to have the ad hoc committee, give them a chance to take a look at all this.
And you can certainly table it for the next meeting, cause ad hoc, I'm, I couldn't, I don't want to jump ahead, cause you have that to approve later on in the meeting. Assuming that you approve the ad hoc committee's work, or the, the organization, then they'll meet one time in, in February, and also the curriculum committee will have a chance to see it, so you'll have a lot of eyes that have looked at it before it hits you at the February board meeting, so.
And I, I think, uh, that's a good point, and if, you know, an item of discussion for this committee is, is not just prioritizing, but sort of timing of these things too, we are already aware of some funds coming in now, um, that will allow us to put some programming in place. Uh, um, and their comfort level is that ad hoc committee, if we're putting together, let's, uh, let's ask their opinion on this, um, of, uh, how comfortable they are acting more quickly on some of these things for, I think, what are, what are good reasons to.
That, and I also, and maybe it has discussed, this has been discussed at the finance committee?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and be very, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, Mr. Suss, your thought.
Yeah, no, I, I just want to be very clear, I don't think anybody at this stage was arguing that these funds should not be used to bring back programs. I think that's the number one thing to use these funds for. Um, the question is only how they do that, in a way that makes the, the most sense with the, the limited resources we have. Mr. Suss?
Well, I'm kind of, I'd like to ask what the purpose of the ad hoc committee is going to be.
Do you want to wait till we get down there, or?
No, the point I want to make is, uh, how, how much are, are this board's hands going to be tied by what the ad hoc committee decides?
Well, um, are you okay with me transitioning into that right now?
Um, yeah, I think it's permanent, so why don't, why don't we transition that at least what it was necessary?
Yep.
I think it's important for us to.
The, the idea of the ad hoc committee would be to take a look at the list of, um, items that were cut in September, and then start that whole add back process. And I think it's good to get community support and get as many eyes on those, those, uh, numbers and those things that have been, been cut as possible. And then to begin thinking about how we want to add back, what we want to add back, and so on. The, um, the power still resides within the school board. In fact, we just had our curriculum committee meeting today, and we talked about the process of the ad hoc committee. The curriculum committee also has a vision on what they want to see as a comprehensive curriculum for, for their, their kids. So I would say, if the ad hoc committee came back and said they want more testing, I would say probably the curriculum committee's not going to accept that, it's probably going to be rejected in that piece. Or even if it came to the board, you're probably not going to accept it either. So, um, you know, a lot of the things, if you think about, I, I mean, orchestra is a perfect example. To me, if we can get that back, that would be terrific. And, but somehow, I think, uh, uh, another set of eyes to get on that whole, um, piece of all the different items that we have in there is okay to do, and to get some community feedback for that. Looking at the ad hoc committee too, and just keeping in mind that it's not necessarily this order of always classroom teacher, classroom teacher, classroom teacher. There are a lot of good research studies for both music and physical education that enhance academic success for kids. So rather than looking at just classroom teacher, classroom teacher, classroom teacher, maybe we look at a broad range of, um, when we add these, we're going to have probably, uh, two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars from the governor's proposal that we could possibly utilize in addition to some of those compensatory dollars. Do we, do we decide as a percentage wise, when you look at this, how much we want to be classroom teacher and how much we want to be extracurricular? Do we want to make that comprehensive, or are we just going to stick with the core? And so, we're going to have that discussion too. So maybe the ad hoc committee comes up with a recommendation that, well, we want to add back second grade teachers, but, you know, we want to, we've, we've seen some of the research for physical education, we'd also like to put in, um, FIAID for thirty minutes for five days a week. And by the way, we'd also like to, uh, add music back in different sections too. So maybe you've added five or six or seven teachers, but you've added one or two of the other parts of the education program that makes it a comprehensive program. So I think that's what the brainstorming session will be with the ad hoc committee. And when they send things to the curriculum committee and to the school board, it'll be very clear to them that these are only suggestions and will hopes, hopefully shed some light on, on these priorities and at least give you a, a sense of where they should be. But it has absolutely no power to make a decision or a recommendation to the school board. Uh, the school board will make those final decisions for, for them.
Yeah, I think that's good to be clear about that, because, uh, you know, I think a committee's job is to make reports. I'm not sure it's properly out and make suggestions to us, but, uh, others would disagree with that probably, but I think in a strict sense, uh, committees reporting the board should make reports rather than suggestions. Uh, the other question I have is, uh, when you looked at this, uh, you looked at all the different ways we could spend money, and this rose to the top. Why?
The second grade?
Yes.
Because of the research based on early childhood education, the primary grades with the teachers one. It, it's a, the reading is so important at those early ages of school, and the best way to do that is to reduce the class sizes at that level.
And how large are these classes going to be if we don't do this?
Between thirty-three and thirty-five.
And what will they be if we do it?
Uh, I have to do the math. Three hundred, what do we have now? Um, nine teachers, so take that by twelve, so three hundred divided by twelve, what's that add up to? Or what's the quotient? It'd be less, it'd probably be closer to twenty-seven, maybe twenty-five.
So that for you was the priority?
Yep.
You know, it seems to me, uh, we don't need to postpone this any further.
I agree.
We can, we can make this decision tonight, and we can get these teachers' contracts going, and, uh, why should we postpone this?
I agree with you, Howard, I think there will be some funds remaining hopefully, and additional funds maybe from the legislature that can be discussed at the ad hoc committee, but I think the second grade add-on is really crucial.
Yeah, we have to trust, I think, what the administration, you know, and it makes sense to me when they say second grade, improve reading, get those class sizes smaller. You know, we can debate a lot of different things, but that is a priority for us, and these, uh, compensatory dollars are to be used for this sort of thing. So, I, I would certainly favor us passing this tonight. Yes, I would make that motion that we approve, uh, hiring these second grade teachers.
All right, we have a motion to approve the hiring of, uh, three elementary staff, uh.
I would second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I have one thing, I want to make sure that everyone understands it's elementary staff, not obligated second grade teachers.
That's a final thing.
Right.
Explain that again.
It's, it's three elementary staff at the lower grades, but it's not necessarily second grade. Because if you all of a sudden have a third grade class that's pushing forty, we'd want to hire a third grade teacher, not a second grade teacher.
That's what Todd said.
That's what Todd said at the beginning.
It could be a couple seconds and a third, or two thirds and a second.
Right.
Yeah, I, I prefer to have my motion ordered that way, so.
Because on the paper it says second grade, but.
Would the maker of the motion please restate the motion?
What does it say here? It says we're.
It's under eight, finance committee would be number four.
Number four.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we, uh, approve the adding back of three elementary staff.
And just to clarify, Yvette, I think you seconded that.
I would second that.
You're fine to second that motion, okay.
Thank you.
That is the motion we are.
Could, could I add that be third grade and below?
Um, I think then that would have to, why don't we, if we want to do that, that would have to be an amendment to the motion, that's what I'm going to.
Just so you know, I'm comfortable with that too, that's, I'm perfectly fine with that, if you want to make that an amendment.
That's what I thought was third grade and below, not a fifth grade.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm not arguing for or against it, I just think, um, we've already had one motion. We had to clarify that already once, um, and that wasn't in the original motion, so if we want to state that, I think that needs to be an amendment to the motion. I think is how we would do that, so, uh, if you'd like to make a motion for that amendment?
Amendment to that, it's for third grade and below.
And below.
Limited to third grade and below.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend that, uh, original motion, to, to limit this to a third grade and below. Um, is there a second for that motion?
I'll second.
Ms. Davis has seconded that, so now that action in front of us is the amendment, uh, to, um, uh, amend the original motion to, to clarify that it only is for third grade and below. Uh, any discussion on just the amendment? Okay, hearing none, then we need to, as a board, vote on the amendment. Um, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the amendment, decision five by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries, okay? And so, um, now we are back to the original question, which is now, um, that we, uh, will be adding three staff at the elementary level, third grade or below. Um, uh, any further discussion on that original question? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries, thank you all. And thank you for indulging my points of order.
Third grade, we're not counting pre-K, it won't go down over to McKinley, right?
No, we can't, no, that would be community ed, so.
So kindergarten, first, second, third, right? Okay, now, okay.
We can make another motion, but.
No, no, that's not, no.
Let's just leave it there, I think we're all okay with that. All right. Um, next item, uh, eight B, uh, I'm sorry, item eight C, the budget, uh, we have an enrollment report. Um, Colleen, do you want to tell us anything, uh, about that enrollment?
I'll just point out that in January, we dropped about thirteen students, that's not unusual. If you look at the numbers, uh, up for eleven, twelve below there, you can see that last year we dropped twelve students, so that's very much on track with where we've been in prior years, very similar to history. Uh, um, average at the very bottom through January is three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one students, and that compares to the subtotal of thirty-six ninety-one under projected. K through twelve, so we're still running above average, which is good. You tend to lose students through the second half of the school year, so as far as the projected numbers are concerned, I think we'll hit that pretty much right on, probably even be a little bit above. So, we're tracking pretty good.
Any questions for Colleen on this item? Turn on, thank you, Colleen. Uh, next is our financial report, any questions on this? Okay, um, next then, uh, gifts and donations. Uh, two gifts have been made, uh, to the, to the district. Um, Fairway Transportation has provided transportation for three student trips. Um, those were to the, uh, middle school music students, uh, to the Sterling House, uh, for a high school student council, uh, to purchase toys, uh, for the Toys for Tots, um, drive. Um, and for the student council trip to purchase Santa and Smiles' gifts. Um, so we certainly thank Fairway Transportation for stepping forward and helping our students, um, participate in some, uh, great events. Uh, we also have, uh, another, and the ongoing donations from the Fairway Booster Club, as we're always thankful for, again, to the fitness center, um, uh, another equipment order in the amount of fourteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars and ninety-eight cents. And as always, we express our appreciation to the Booster Club for, for that donation. Any, uh, questions or comments on these gifts? Hearing none, all those in, uh, entertain a motion perhaps, a motion to accept the gifts as listed. You have a motion to accept these gifts, is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second to accept these gifts, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Okay, we are now on to other committee reports. Um, we have, uh, no, uh, reports from the insurance. We have, uh, no, uh, reports from the insurance committee or the wellness comor- committee. We do have a report from the community ed, uh, committee, Anne Marie.
Good evening. Just a few informational items and then some reminders. So adult basic education at Town Square has been asked by South Central to create, um, a nursing assistant lab. So what that means is there's some additional space that's contiguous with where they are located now at Town Square that's available. So South Central would be furnishing through, uh, an original ARRA grant, a stimulus grant. The equipment and like wheelchairs and stethoscopes and all of the things that you would have to learn, have to have to learn to become, uh, nursing assistant. And they would be painting the space because it needs some paint, needs a fresh coat of paint. And then the money for the rent would actually come through the Southeast Adult Basic Education Consortium, which Faribault belongs to, uh, and that would total about thirteen thousand four hundred dollars. So there would be a, an additional space that would act as both a nursing lab, so a training area that could do skills training for nursing, um, college prep classes to get people prepared to go onto college and healthcare careers, healthcare academy, uh, joint venture that we have with the workforce center and South Central College. Uh, so it's a, it's a good deal. It would be one year only, 'cause we only have one year of funding secured. So hoping that we get additional funds down the road. It would provide some classroom space and a training lab. So a really interesting idea that we'd like to pursue. So I'll give you more of an update as we move forward, but that's the offer on the table right there, so it's across our fingers. Just in terms of another aspect of community education, Carlton College is providing about six thousand dollars through, uh, ICAP grant through the Office of Higher Education to fund additional staff for the CAS program, that's the College Ambition Starts Today program at the high school. That would be really to focus on documenting, um, how that staff person works with twenty to twenty-five high school aged kids, mainly first generation college students, um, that, on college access. And really trying to figure out what the challenges are for those students in becoming college ready and accessing college. So documenting those challenges in hopes to expand the programming and bring additional funding, um, in future years. So that's Martha Schultz and of course, adult basic education is Pat Weisler. Two wonderful staff, all the community ed staff are great, um, really good at partnering with, with our community. So those are the informational items. The reminders are, as Colleen touched on earlier, Colleen, uh, Cardenudo, touched on FAST, the Family and Schools Together project. Uh, the, we'll be wrapping up with three more sessions on the twenty-ninth, so next, tomorrow, Tuesday at six P M. Uh, next week, the fifth, and the following week, the twelfth. And again, just there's three classes that are happening for parents. One in Somali, one in English, and one in Spanish. Very well attended. Howard, I believe you attended one? Just looking for more attendance if, if you'd like to come and join us. That'd be great.
Yeah, I wish I would've added when I would've.
Yeah, exactly. It's really helpful, isn't it? It really is. Just a reminder to February twenty-fifth, is it Tuesday, and I believe that's your next board meeting, right? Um, that will be the Bully Prevention Community Summit that's happening at the middle school. And forgive me, but I believe the time is, is five o'clock, but I will get you the time confirmed, um, through email soon. And we will have an announce, announcements leading up to that event. And just the next Community Education Advisory Council is February twelfth at four o'clock at the district office. And I'll be sending out an email soon. So, thank you.
Any questions for Anne Marie before she actually sits down? All right, thank you, Anne. All right, we are now on to, uh, other matters. Item ten A, um, uh, approve Faribault High School Spanish Department trip to Costa Rica, uh, for spring break of twenty-fourteen. I want to, uh, Barbara up. She can tell us a little bit about it.
Okay, good evening. Uh, so at the last meeting, you had asked that I bring back a little more of, an outline of some ideas for fundraising and what we can do. And so I look back at previous things that we've done and I contacted other schools to see what they've done and talked with a few people. And so when we have our parent meeting, which we're planning to in February, uh, we just see what the interest is, what people, uh, would like to do, what ideas they have. And we put forth the ideas that we have for them from this list. There are a lot of them they can do on their own. And so we have anything from coupon books, um, sports concessions. We had somebody help us with Legion Suppers, uh, doing restaurant dates so that we get a percentage of the meals. Catalog percentages, like candle sales are tastefully simple. We've done a car wash before. And then I just talked to Chris Stivell and he said that we could piggyback on the band fundraisers and that we would just then transfer the money over to our account. So that was really nice. And, uh, of course, looking into all these donations and scholarship opportunities.
Any questions for, for Barbara on this item? We've talked about some of this before. Um, we asked Barbara to bring back, uh, a substantial list of how students might earn some money. That's what's in front of us, so.
I appreciate you doing that.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any further questions then for, for Barbara on this item? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move that we approve the, um, Spanish trip.
You have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Barbara. Next, uh, the ad hoc committee. Uh, we already discussed this a little bit, but here's where it is on the agenda. Todd, do you wanna maybe take us back to this conversation?
Sure. Uh, the main purpose of it is to approve, um, having me move forward with this ad hoc committee. These are a list of names that we have right now. Again, I'll, uh, ask the audience, whoever's watching, if they want to volunteer to be on this committee, we'd love to help you. So it doesn't have to necessarily limit to the number of people that we have on the committee right now. So, um, the purpose of the ad hoc committee will be to investigate how we can prioritize any of the additional, uh, funds that we get based on the programs that were cut last September. And, um, looking for some feedback on, on how you would envision this committee going forward. I was at the curriculum committee earlier today and, uh, we, comprehensive education really came up strong. So I'm hoping that that's the direction that we can go to, is we're not just gonna look at it as just adding back staff just for classroom or core curriculum. Let's look at it as comprehensive education and make sure that we're looking at all the different areas, not just one, um, particulars area. So that's the idea. The committee will look at it, we'll have some good discussions. It'll be more of a report like Howard said. Uh, we'll give that report to the curriculum committee and make sure that they, their vision of what they believe the curriculum should be looking, should look like, or if they have comments or suggestions, um, they would, they would certainly give their input and then we'd bring it back to the ad hoc or bring it back to the school board for, for discussion.
Could you talk a little bit about timelines?
Sure. We're looking at having the first meeting, if this is approved, this committee is approved in February. And we haven't looked at our calendars yet. We'll try to coordinate those. But I'd love to get the first meeting within the first two weeks of February. And then having the curriculum committee take a look at it. I'm sure there's gonna be revisions after the first go around with both the curriculum committee and the school board. And then have another meeting in March. We really won't know what our funding source is gonna be until May. So even if we have to go into April to take a look at it again, to make sure that Vision One applies to our, our, um, goals that we're setting here, and then the curriculum committee also gives, um, their blessing on it. I think that we, we've got at least three very good meetings, probably two hour meetings. And, uh, to discuss these things along with the three curriculum committee meetings, take a look at it. So that's the idea.
I've had people tell me they were on the committee and they're excited to be on it, so.
Good.
I don't wanna make it sound like I'm not in favor of this. I, I welcome it, so.
Good.
Absolutely. The more stakeholders we can have involved as we make these really difficult decisions, I think, uh, the better informed we can be as a board about, uh, what, uh, people in our community are, are thinking about what we're doing. All right, any further questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, Todd has asked for an action for a formal approval of this, so, um, I'll entertain a motion to approve this ad hoc committee.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the two thousand and thirteen ad hoc committee as described.
We have a motion to approve, there's a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All right. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next, discussion about the high school automo- automobile program, uh, for twenty thirteen, uh, twenty fourteen.
Yeah, we're, we're, I just wanted to keep the board up to speed, what we've been talking about with the automotive program. We, we had a very good meeting with, uh, with South Central College, Minnesota Department of Education. I can't remember Mike's last name, owns Mike's auto body and repair, or, uh, Mike's garage on, uh, Lindell. Yeah. Yeah, thank you. And, uh, we're trying to brainstorm on how we can make, uh, the situation that we, we find ourselves in with the cut. Uh, if, if we can figure out a way outside of the box to offer this program for kids and at the same time possibly give college credit to the students. And our goal is to try to make it a concurrent program to offer college credit and high school credit and still have Mister Lesman teach the course. So we're moving on it. We're, we've kinda gone back and forth with it. The only gap that seems to be holding back, as you may guess, is the money. It's about nineteen thousand dollars to approve the program. There are some options out there for South Central College to take a look at. Uh, one of those options could be, could be, it's not, they, they can yet, they have to have approval for it, but use some of the Perkins money that they get from the state, uh, or from the feds to do some of these collaborative programs. So we're still looking and we're talking. And we've had, like I said, some good communication with some of the partners that are out there, including South Central College. And I think it'd be a nice program for, for both the high school and the, and the college. So that is giving you the up-to-date status of the auto program.
Any questions for Todd on that?
Would the eligibility to enter the program change in that situation?
Uh, no, it wouldn't. It, I think that South Central College would look at possibly doing some sort of an AA program to degree the program. They don't have that right now. So that would be ideal for, for us anyways. I don't know how ideal it would be for South Central College, 'cause they, just like the schools, the public schools, they need a certain ratio of kids with, within the classroom to make sure that they don't lose money. So you know, we're still in the discussion stage, but it would not disqualify anybody from being eligible to enter the class. They still have to go through the auto one, auto two, and, and so on, to get the prerequisites to enter the, the class. But the concurrent programming wouldn't, wouldn't eliminate anybody. Okay, that's all.
Any other questions on this item? I'll just say I'm excited to see, uh, community members, uh, stepping up to work, uh, with the district on, on not just this item, but, uh, um, music within the district. We have a music profusion, a music boosters program that has been very active and, and, uh, trying to talk about what options might be available there. Um, middle school, uh, sports volunteers, um, uh, trying to step forward to see what they can do in those situations. Uh, these are difficult times and, and, uh, I'm really excited to see people pulling together to see what we can do as a community. And I appreciate these discussions. We have their items on this. All right, hearing none. Uh, next is item ten D. Uh, consider approval of the superintendent contract for twenty twelve, uh, twenty thirteen and twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. So I'll give a, a little history on this item. When Mister Sesker, uh, was hired in the district, uh, he was given a three-year contract, which is the standard for the hiring of new superintendents. Also, very typical for, uh, uh, first contracts, um, is for, uh, salaries for the second and the third year of that contract to not be specified in that sauce, uh, in that contract, but to, to be left open to be negotiated at a, at a later date. And, uh, and so, um, uh, that has happened, um, to have that discussion. Uh, future contracts would typically for superintendents, uh, have, uh, salaries for all three years and any raises negotiated at the, the initial signing of the contract. Those are sort of the, the standard ways these things are done. Um, as we finished, uh, the superintendent's, uh, evaluation, uh, it was time to look at this. And so Jerry and Tom and I sat down, uh, with Mister Sesker and, uh, talked through, uh, his contract and, uh, thought about what changes might be appropriate. I think I'll tell you that the contract in front of you didn't come from an unanimous decision, uh, on the part of, uh, Jerry and, and Tom and myself. I think as we discuss this, each of us can, uh, express our feelings on this. But, uh, um, at this moment, I'll just clarify what is in the contract that is in front of you, um, so that everyone is clear. Uh, two pieces of this contract have, have changed. Um, otherwise it has stayed, uh, the same from the original contract. Um, and so Article Six, um, Section Two, Vacation. This is on page three, uh, of the contract, page sixty-six of my agenda. It says here that the superintendent may elect to take up to ten days of accrued and unused vacation as additional salary if they are unused at the, the end of the year. Uh, that was five, um, in the previous wording of the contract, so that has been increased by five. Later in the contract then, the second change is on item, excuse me, Article Nine, uh, Section One, uh, Item A. Highlighted there for you the contract amount. We put into the contract a one percent, uh, raise, uh, for the second year of the contract, or I should say for half of the year for the second year of the contract. And a zero percent raise for the, the third year of the contract. So this means that the base salary for the superintendent would go up, um, from a hundred and forty thousand to a hundred and forty-one thousand, uh, and four hundred um, in, in the middle of the year. Um, so he would only receive that raise for the second half of this year. It would start effectively, uh, January one, at the beginning of, of this current month. Um, if approved by the board, that salary would stay the same for the third year of the contract. Then just some, uh, last information to put some things in perspective. You can see, um, at the end of this, some comparable districts and superintendent salaries. You can see that, uh, um, Faribault, uh, compensates its superintendent, uh, in the same range as other districts, although, uh, slightly lagging behind a number of the districts. Something we wanna, we wanna watch out and keep in mind as well. Um, as I look at this, uh, we would only trail, uh, um, of the, the six districts listed here, our superintendent would be, uh, fifth out of six, uh, in twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, and sixth out of six in twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. And so, uh, something for us to keep in mind as well as we discuss that. So I just wanna lay out what the, the facts and the history are of this and then open this item for discussion by the board.
I'd like to hear from the other members of the committee.
I was, uh, the, just, the one out of the two out of three, the one out of three that, uh, proposed that we not raise the salary at all. Uh, that is in no way, absolutely no way reflective of my admiration and appreciation of the work that Mister Sesker has done. He has been an outstanding superintendent for this district during a difficult time. Uh, I also am cognizant of that chart at the, in our materials that, uh, by next year he would be the lowest paid of the six areas listed. We don't know where the other schools will follow, fall when they settle there or get a permanent superintendent. Uh, it is simply my belief that since we have found ourself in a position of not having. of not having enough money to do what we all believe would be necessary, that we do what even small things. I mean, the amount of money here is, is, you know, not even a partial drop in the bucket. I understand that, but it is symbolic to me that when we are seeing cuts that are unprecedented in the programming that we are going to be able to offer our students, when we are facing cuts that put us not at the bottom of the Big Nine, or not just at the bottom of the Big Nine, but probably below other districts much smaller size than we, that we not approve any salary raises at this time. Like I say, this is in no way reflected of my appreciation of what Mr. Sesker has done. He, he deserves this raise and more. But the students in our district deserve more as well. And until we can find a way to get our funding to match our need, that I'm uncomfortable doing anything that contributes to a lessening of student opportunity.
Well, I was one of two that supported this in respect to what has transpired. I certainly also understand and fully appreciate where Tom is coming from, given the environment we're at. But I do believe that there is a need for us as a board to recognize the work that Mr. Sesker has done. His request and our recommendation is not thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars. And I don't see it necessarily breaking the bank. But I do believe that from the standpoint of recognizing the work that's being done, that small, small percentage is, I think, very, very important.
Am I reading this right? Is this a seven hundred dollar raise?
For the first year, yes. The base rate is going up by fourteen hundred. But it only gets paid out for half of the year for the first year, so only seven hundred of that is received the first year, the second year, and he will receive the full, full fourteen hundred.
So seven hundred dollars a year?
Roughly speaking, yeah.
Well, I would speak in favor of passing this because it's a token. And I certainly think our superintendent is worthy of a token, especially when I look at the other schools and, well, especially when I consider the hard work he did this last year and the evaluation that we have of him. Excellent evaluation. And I look at the, where we rank in the Big Nine, and we're on the bottom. And I think about student opportunity and the value and the role that the superintendent plays. And Tom, I respect what you're saying. You know, my, my response to that is we're always going to have that student opportunity there. And if we always followed that, we probably wouldn't give raises out ever. But the other thing is, I think there's a correlation between effectiveness of the superintendent and the eventual opportunities we offer to our students. And I am most concerned that we're able to retain outstanding superintendents as long as we can. So I would favor, or I would favor passing this.
It is also my desire to retain Mr. Sesker for as long as we can.
Yeah. Wasn't trying to imply that was the word, so, yeah.
Other questions or comments on this? I have them in front of us.
We have a motion.
Nope, we do not have a motion. I would entertain one if there is.
I'd be most proud to move that we approve this contract for our superintendent for the twenty-eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen school years.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the contract that you see in front of you with the two changes that we have discussed. Any further, any further questions or discussion?
Again, I want to emphasize this is a token. I mean, seven hundred dollars, you know, obviously it's seven hundred dollars. But I think in view of the work that he's done and our evaluation of him and so forth, probably deserving a lot more than that. So we make at least a token and not, and not do anything else.
I second the idea that he's deserving a lot more than that.
Yeah.
Any further questions or comments?
Isn't this fourteen hundred per year?
So, what I would say, going forward would be fourteen hundred per year. That's right.
Yes. Okay.
The only seven hundred of that is, sorry if it's confusing. We, only seven hundred of that is, is, his base salary is going up by fourteen hundred, but it's effective January one, so for this school year, he would only receive seven hundred of that fourteen hundred dollar raise and he would get the full amount the second year.
That's one percent.
It's one percent. That's exactly right.
And we have superintendents making a hundred and fifty-five thousand in the Big Nine.
Yeah, he will be at the bottom of the Big Nine for a full-time superintendent in 2013, 14. And something for us to keep in mind as we move forward. And I guess maybe I'll just add my last comment. I was on the board, as many of us were, when we hired Mr. Sesker. And I can assure the community, there were not ten other Todd Seskers out there to hire. We, we got the right person and we want to keep him. And that's a, it's a serious matter. We, we can joke about it and, and, and as much as this is also just about respecting Todd, that there, there is a reality that good superintendents are in very high demands. And we do not want to ignore that. They're, they're not, they're very difficult to replace.
And they don't allow the communication skills he does.
Mr. Chair, just if I could make one comment.
Please.
The more respect for Todd is that he's accepting of this token raise. So he's also very cognizant of where we're at in this district and is willing to move in that direction.
I can say that Mr. Sesker was a very bad negotiator on his own behalf.
And of course, that does mean he's looking out for our students.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right, any further questions or comments? Hearing none, let's do a roll call vote on this item, please, Mr. Clinton.
Chair Robichaud?
Aye.
Richard Olson?
No.
Ben Martholler?
Aye.
Jason Ingrid?
Aye.
Deb Davis?
Aye.
Tom Casper?
No.
And I'll vote aye. Mr. Chairman, the vote is five-two in favor.
Thank you all. Next item on the agenda, consideration of committee assignments. After discussions in these last couple of weeks, I was contacted by both Mr. Robichaud and Mr. Bodie on the board asking that we have some further consideration of committee assignments for this board. And so with that, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Robichaud to, to let us know what he's thinking there.
Thank you. First of all, I'll be entertaining or introducing a motion, which is not to reconsider or rescind the motion that was done at the last board meeting. It's basically a whole new motion to consider appointing Mr. Olson to some committees. I do so, and I've got some notes here and I want to share with the fellow board members. After much self-reflection and consideration, and also for the sake of compromise, which we have talked about over the last several weeks, after much discussion with residents of this community whom I have the highest regard and the highest respect, and that they're concerned that they do see this board working together with much of the issues that we need to face over the next several weeks and several months, for the sake of harmony among this board, I think that Mr. Olson and I have shared with you in the past some concerns about past board actions. And we don't want to get caught into that struggle again. Also, the work that we need to do as a board, also the struggles we'll face as a board, not only financially, but programmatically. And working for the betterment collectively for programs for students. I don't believe there's anybody on this board who does not have that as their sole purpose of serving on this board and working diligently to get the resources necessary to provide for programs for students so they are not short-changed. They are going to be short-changed currently, and I think we need to work together to make sure that doesn't face our students in the future. And for Mr. Olson's ability to represent the district, I believe we represent all members of this community, not any stakeholder, separate stakeholder groups. We don't represent taxpayer, we represent taxpayers, but not specifically just taxpayers. We represent everybody in this district. And that Mr. Olson's ability to represent the district with the rest of us, I think, is very appropriate. So with that, I would like to entertain or introduce a motion that Mr. Olson be appointed to the following committees, policy, insurance, and soccer. And should Mr. Olson accept this, I would hope that he will work in a collaborative decision-making environment with all the rest of us. I would like to add just one more comment in reflect to the action that was taken before. I wish to state that I am in full support of Jason's leadership on this board. He is a principal leader and he works diligently under a strong code of ethics. And he is providing the necessary leadership in a time of difficulty and head for this past year. And I know you will work and respect all board members and what they are doing on this district. And I know you will and do continue to allow for divergent opinions of all members. And I respect and appreciate your leadership. But again, I'll return, I'll repeat the motion that Mr. Olson be appointed to the following committees, policy, insurance, and soccer.
So the board has a motion in front of it before discussion. I would like to know if there's a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
So we have a motion and a second. To, to clarify what the motion is, is to place Mr. Olson on the policy, insurance, and soccer committees. Further discussion? Mr. Bodie, would you like to express your thoughts at this time?
No, I want to hear what Richard's going to say.
Did it pick a reason why, you know, I'm not on the finance?
And, and with all respect to answering that question, Mr. Olson, I, I agonized over that for a long period of time based on my motion. And by the way, it's up to the board. I've introduced the motion, it's up to the board as to what direction they want to go. And it, and it ties into the comment about working for the betterment of all students in this district. And I think everyone on this board has an obligation to do what they can to find the resources necessary to support those programs for students, the orchestra program, the middle school athletics. Go down that list of areas where we had to cut. And as a member of the finance committee, you, you had more information about what was going on, the financial condition of this district, and why it was critically important for us to go after a levy. And with that knowledge, there was still an active part, on your part, to go out and activate campaign against that levy, looking for resources necessary to maintain the programs that we had for students, which is our ethical obligation on this board. And so I agonized over that tremendously, knowing that, that you had served on that committee. I do believe that the policy committee has some very significant ramifications if we do not have policies which tie into not only our financial, but our decision-making on this board. But based on the fact that you had that information and still actively campaigned against the levy, that's why I do not have you recommended for the, the finance committee. But again, it's the board's decision. I'm just introducing a motion.
Any questions or comments at this time?
Again, I'm, you know, I guess I'm perplexed why I'm not, again, on the finance, I used to be treasurer on that. I, you know, I guess I tried to do the best I could on, on the finance and started way back by, you know, where, where did the money go? That's why I voted no, no on the contract. In fact, the only no vote I had was on the superintendent's contract with the money. So I, you know, I looked at that, you know, would we have had the money if we didn't give out raises? But we were not going to talk about that. But again, it's, I think I've done my best. I've tried to report to, to all stakeholders exactly what's going on there. Again, I think that we can work together. I mean, it's like this meeting, but the only no vote was, I was consistent with the superintendent's contract. I did not state anything about the superintendent, because I think he's a great guy personally. You know, so I'm not voting against him, like the superintendent, but just against the money. But again, it's, you know, my passion is, you know, with finance, I'm, I have my own businesses, which is, you know, pretty successful. Yes, policy is important, but again, I've never served on the policy committee. That's not really my forte, I guess. Again, it's, I think I can contribute. And I think that we can work together on this. I've stated publicly and Tom knows it about a technology levy. You know, pure technology, I've said, in fact, a year ago, I think it was on finance, that it was, I would support a technology levy on this. And I still do. I'm not going to change my mind. That's why I said we can bring this ourselves into the twenty-second century. So, I mean, that kind of stuff. I would support something like that. I would support, you know, a lot of stuff. In fact, that's why I asked a lot of questions, talked to Tom and other people on the board about some of the issues that I thought, what I heard. And like I said, the only no vote I cast was the superintendent's contract, which again, I think I've been accused of being consistent sometimes on the board.
Or not accused, I mean, that's characteristic.
You know what I'm saying. You know what I'm saying. But, you know, again, it's, I would, you know, my, if, if you're going to appoint me to anything, would just be to the finance, you know, insurance doesn't meet that much, really.
Well, I think two of those you were on before, weren't you, Richard?
Insurance, I think it meets once or twice a year. Three times a year. You know, of course, that, trying to understand the medical insurance, I don't know if anybody really understands it. But you know, I'm there to represent the board and I report back to the board. I think I'm the only one that's on that committee, or was. Was Howard?
I am this year.
Okay, so whoever, I mean, in the past, so.
Yeah, and you know, I shared with you my, my rationale, Richard. And again, it's a decision of the board. That's my motion. If somebody wants to amend it to comply with your wishes, that would be up to them. But I want to be very honest with you and share with you why I did not make a recommendation that it be the finance committee and that the policy committee be in lieu of that. Still put you on three committees, but.
I guess I, you know, I can speak to why I voted the way I did at the last meeting as well in regard to the finance committee. It was in particular the finance committee. I was not on the board when we went through the campaign last year. But I heard from a lot of people that, that they were very concerned about a board member who was on the finance committee printing an ad that made statements that were misleading, I think, at best. And that that could have influenced voters to vote against the levy. And that that does not serve our children. And so my concern would be going forward, if we were to ask the community for another levy, if there was someone on the finance committee that could make similar statements that might affect the outcome of the election. And it wasn't a vote that I made lightly by any means, and I know I'm a new board member and, you know, I wasn't on the board during that time, but I was in the community during the campaign. And I think it did make a difference in the levy vote. And I think it did make a difference in the levy vote.
Other comments from board members?
I'd like to say something, I'm not sure how this is going to come out. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but appointment to a board committee is as representative of the board to present and to accept information from the committee and then report back to the board. It is not, it's as a board representative, not as necessarily a, any particular constituency. And for a board to function well, we have to have trust. Trust that the decisions of the board, the positions, please emphasize the plural, the positions of the board, all board members, can be communicated to the committee members and have whatever possible impact on committee deliberations, committee decisions, committee recommendations. But it is the trust that whomever might be on the board and represented, I'm sorry, who would ever be on the committee representing the board would represent the whole board and not just their own particular, specific interest. Not that that interest can't be stated and presented as an individual concern, but we have to be able to trust that our representatives, meaning the board's representatives on these committees, will actually represent the whole board. And in order to be trusted, a person needs to be trustworthy. And I voted the way that I did on the decision a couple of weeks ago because I had some doubt about the ability, Mr. Olson, of you to represent me on the Finance Committee. And some doubt that I might get the whole story and nothing, you know, nothing but the whole story from you as you reported back to our committee. Now, since that vote, you and I had a long, and I acknowledge here publicly, I appreciate very much your willingness to visit with me the other day. And I've learned some things, and I know a little more than I knew then. But I still assert that representing the board on a committee is a weighty thing in that you have to represent yourself, you have to represent the citizens that elected us all, you have to represent the good of the students, but you do need to represent us as a board. And that was, this is my way of trying to explain to you the thought process that went through my head when I made that vote several weeks ago. I think you deserve, there wasn't as much discussion then as there might have been, and I wanted to make sure that I stated this for you and for the community, what my thought process was.
Other comments? I think one of the concerns of our last meeting was that as a board, we maybe didn't exercise our right to say what we thought for the last vote. And we ended up having a split vote without everyone explaining their viewpoint, so I'd like to hear from everyone.
Mr. Chair? Yeah, after a long talk was over the phone, about a half hour, I think.
Closer to an hour.
Hour.
I wasn't counting.
Yeah, and it was a very good discussion, which is, you know, I think that we're moving towards healing this. I really think, I've said to Tom, and I think to Howard and to other people here, that, you know, I want this to stop, I want this to heal. We've got a lot of challenges ahead. Again, you know, I can, if I'm placed in the Finance Committee, I will represent the board. That's, I've said it publicly. I've said it publicly, I will represent the board on that. And of course, with the treasurer, Ms. Davis will give the reports. And Mr. Bodie's on there, too. Again, we have to move forward. And I think it's time that we all move forward. And I thought we were starting fresh January first. And I want today to be January first. Let's start, let's wipe everything out. Start from square one. We just walked in here. Let's start, you know, really thinking about the kids. I know we all are. That's why, as you mentioned to Jerry, you know, reading teachers, because he said with his experience K through three. That's why I try to specify that a little bit better. So it just that it's, I think we can do it, we can regain the trust of the community. I'm willing. I am willing. I will, I will accomplish this task. I will. This is publicly, it's on tape, you've all heard me.
I did not talk last time of why I voted as I did. I don't think sitting on a committee is a privilege, is part of the job. I do not believe that, you know, just because you were voted by taxpayers that that necessarily is the right response either. But it is part of being on the board to help represent the board on the committees, as Thomas said. I do not believe that just because Mr. Olson says that he's going to represent the board on the Finance Committee, that, you know, he's going to do that, but he might at a later date use information inappropriately again. There's nothing wrong with serving on different boards, or different committees, I should say. I've tried to get around in the six years that I've been on the board to try almost everything. It gives you a better perspective of what the board as a collective does. I think this is an opportunity to move forward, to help heal. I don't necessarily believe that the Finance Committee is the right choice. He can come to the meetings, they're open, they're public. You know, at our last meeting, we asked him his opinion on a lot of things. And that helped, that's very helpful. But I don't think you have to be an actual committee member to do that.
Mr. Chairman?
Please, Mr. Board.
I'll explain this afterwards. I'm going to move that we strike out the word "Policy Committee" and insert the word "Finance Committee." I move an amendment to the motion.
So we have a motion to amend the original motion to replace "Policy" with "Finance." If we get a second for that motion, we can discuss it. Is there a second for that motion?
Can I second it?
Absolutely.
Yes, I am.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Then please, Mr. Bodie.
Okay. I first want to acknowledge my fellow board members, because there certainly is some wisdom in what they said and what they're doing and what also happened at the last meeting. And I can understand that because there's a lot of pain going on right now in this district with these cuts. And personally, I think about those 93 votes that would have swung the other way. Maybe if they hadn't been influenced, then we wouldn't be in this situation. That said, I would like to try to convince the other board members to think about the wisdom in letting him be on this committee this coming year. One of the reasons is, I think Richard has made a real statement about trying to work together. I saw some indication of it tonight, particularly on one motion, where I was hoping we could work together. And it came out of the Finance Committee. And so I think that, you know, we've all said we'd like to heal, we'd like to keep moving forward. And I know this is important to Richard, to be on that Finance Committee, so I think we should give him a chance. My last reason is, I kind of enjoy him on the Finance Committee. Because I like to know what, and first of all, I like to have him informed on it. And I like to kind of know what he's thinking. And, you know, do I, you know, I, yeah, Richard, I had some disappointments that maybe you didn't always, we knew some things, and I didn't think they always got represented the best in some of your ads and so forth. But I'm going to say, let's move on, and let's put that behind us. And I'd like to make every effort we can to try to, because I think we've got big things to get done in the name of education here for our kids. And so we've got some levies to pass, we've got some work to do, we've got some heavy decisions to make. So I'd like to encourage my fellow board members to allow him to be on this committee.
I thank you, Howard, for saying that. Thank you. Because I'm quite serious. I'm quite, I'm quite serious. Again, it's for the record. Dealing with Ms. Davis, I was on many committees for many years, the curriculum, before it was disbanded. Now, it's again, the Special Ed Committee, I mean, I've been on various committees, yeah. So then I just settled on, you finance, and went to some other smaller committees and stuff like that. But we have to learn to work together, and I'm willing. I'm willing, it's, like I said, let's just start from square one again. And let's see, I've always said, and I will continue to say, I want this district to be the best district in the state of Minnesota. Not going to change my mind at all. The best in, you know, in technology, I've said that publicly. But, you know, for any kind of restrictions of, you know, this is, this is my strong point, I suppose, rather than a lot of other stuff. But I'll leave it up to the board to decide.
I have one question, Mr. Olson. If as a board, we don't feel like you're representing us if we put you on the Finance Committee, what kind of objection would you have if we brought something like this back again to take you off?
Well, again, hopefully people would call me, you know, or something like that. But again, you know, like you said, conditions like, oh, if you, you know, I still have my principles, you know. But again, I may not agree with everything, of course, that applies to everybody on the board, too. In fact, I think Tom had a no vote in here, too, right? Along with myself, so. But again, it's, we just have to learn how to communicate better. And since, and you're the treasurer, so, of this committee. So I would, well, not report to you, but you know, I'm just trying to say. Along with Mr. Bodie, too.
I want to, I would like to add my thoughts at this moment. I'm going to start by saying that over this, these last few weeks, I, like a number of other board members, have heard from many members of the community on this issue. And of course, it's concerning to me when members of the community that I respect are worried that this board is not working together. I think it's actually an incredibly unfair characterization of this board over the last four years, as I've seen it. In spite of some conflicts, it has been rare that I have not been able to have a respectful conversation with anyone on this board. And that includes Ms. Olson. I don't think we've ever had a conversation one-on-one between Ms. Olson and I in which we did not act respectfully towards each other. Certainly, it's gotten heated a few times in meetings here. But I think that's natural when issues are important to us. Everyone at this table has the best interests of our students at heart. I truly believe that of every single member of this board. I hope everyone believes that of myself. I want to say a few things, though. I'm going to support putting Mr. Olson back on the Finance Committee. There are no strings attached to this. I'm going to take him at his word when he talks about moving forward. It is certainly my hope as well, Mr. Olson. I want to state some concerns that I have moving forward. It is very easy to talk about working together when the decisions we make are easy. It's difficult to talk about it when the decisions we have are hard. And everyone at this table knows when those decisions are going to come. We're going to have contracts that need to be negotiated, and those are going to be hard decisions, and we're going to disagree. And I want to clarify that I've never had a single problem with any vote that Mr. Olson has ever taken. As an elected official, it's his duty to vote his conscience. We're going to have teacher contracts to negotiate. Whether or not this board is going to go forward with another attempt at a levy is something for us to consider and discuss again. And it's going to be hard, and there's going to be disagreement on this board when we do that. And it's very easy right now, when we're not facing those, to say we're going to work together in the future. And then those votes are going to take place, and if we're unhappy with a vote, we still have to work together. And that's where we're at. And Mr. Olson, when you say you mean to move forward, that's when I expect you to step forward and work with this board. It's not when you agree with us, but when you disagree with us. And I don't mean with your vote, I mean with your other actions. I'll take you at your word, that that is your hope. I ask for no promises from you in order to support this motion. That is my hope moving forward. I'll share with the community. Mr. Olson and I have been in discussions about getting a mediator to have some further discussions. I think it's helpful to do that. Long-term, to think about how to make sure that our discussions stay respectful and we learn how to disagree agreeably. And Mr. Olson has expressed an interest in doing that as well. There are some mediation services which are of no cost to the district and I think could help us to sit down in a formal manner and think about how we can make sure that we don't find ourselves in this position again. I hope with this vote tonight, regardless of how it turns out, I'm not sure how this vote will turn out, that we are all committed to moving forward. I know that's the desire of everyone. And I appreciate hearing that from all the members of the board tonight, even though I know there's still some disagreements even on this difficult issue. So those are my thoughts on the matter. The floor is still open, we have an amendment in front of us.
Jason, we are talking of, what, getting together?
Absolutely.
Type of thing, you know, and talking, so that we can all move in one direction.
Richard Olson and I have already started trying to put some plans in place for that. I think we'll be moving forward with that.
A real positive outlook on that. Because these fights, that, it doesn't help anybody.
Doesn't?
It doesn't, that really doesn't help anybody, so. But, so we're both in agreement with that.
Absolutely.
And when we reach something, we'll come back and report to you, is that correct?
Absolutely. My plan is to keep the board informed as we talk. This is not a Richard Olson and Jason Engbert issue, this is, should always be a board issue. Other comments or questions? Do we have an amendment in front of us?
I'd like to say one more thing, please.
Please.
I have not always agreed with Mr. Olson before and during my time on the board. I believe there was Patrick, no, I should know this, who said, "I may disagree with what you say, but I'll defend to the death your right to say it." That is the heart of democracy. And I would encourage Mr. Olson to always, as he has, and I fully expect he will, to state his opinion and his concerns. It helps me clarify my own thinking. So thank you for doing that. The one thing that has stuck with me was times when things were written, or said, or published, that were not accurate. So I guess what I'm asking all of us on the board to do is to take a commitment to accuracy. Whenever we say something in public, representing ourselves, representing, well, that's all we can represent is ourselves. The board speaks through its actions. But when we speak with the public, we have to make a commitment to being accurate. Because false, or misleading, or partial information does not help the community make good decisions. Only the truth can do that. So I'm looking for, in order to move forward, which I hope we can do, I'm looking for a renewed commitment to accuracy, to say what we really, what really happened. a renewed commitment to accuracy, to say what we really, what really happened, and if we're not sure, find out.
Any further discussion on the part of the board? We do have an amendment in front of us, to the original motion, to replace the word "Finance," or "Policy," with the word "Finance." The original motion was to place Mr. Olson on the, so if amended, the, the motion would then read, to place Mr. Olson on the Finance, Insurance, and Soccer Committees. Without further discussion, there's no further discussion, Mr. Kirk, if you would please take a roll call.
Jerry Robichaud?
Aye.
Richard Olson?
Aye.
Yvette Martha Hutter?
Aye.
Jason Engrich?
Aye.
Jeff Davis?
Aye.
Tom Casper?
Aye.
And all of you, aye, Mr. Chairman, seven, zero, in favor.
Thank you all. So now we are back to the original motion as amended, so we have a motion in front of us, to place Mr. Olson on the Finance, Insurance, and Soccer Committees. Any further discussion on the original motion? All right, hearing none? Let's just do a voice vote, based on the last vote, that probably will do it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion carries. Thank you all, I appreciate it. These are not difficult issues. As I said, it's, it's easy to work together when we agree, it's more difficult when we have disagreements and...
Jason, I think we took a first step.
Well, thank you, Mr. Olson, I think so too. All right, so with that, some other items of information from our student representatives.
Now, the new semester has started, I think we're all just working on getting it, getting used to it. Our Student Council, we have, our next big event sort of thing is March Madness, and we're still working on details about that. But for this meeting, all I can really say is, the times we're in are affecting our students, but I'm hopeful and I'm excited about the ad hoc committee that I will be taking a part of, to come and conclude, or come and bring new ideas as to how we're gonna, as you guys were all saying, heal this situation. And so I'm looking forward to that, and after this meeting, I'm extremely proud to be a part of this.
Thank you very much.
So, here, what are the plans for the prom this year?
We're still working on it, we just, we're just working on our new meeting for, or just working on getting a prom committee put together, so nothing's set in stone yet. I know the weekend is the first weekend in May, that's about all I know right now, but I'll have more information for the next one.
It could have been similar to the last couple of years when people had...
I'm assuming so, yes.
Good luck.
Thank you.
So adult behavior doesn't scare you?
No, I'm, I think I'm comfortable with it, very, very good students.
Thank you very much. School board members, any items of information from the school board?
Yeah, I attended the conference, Todd was there, and some others were there too. MSBA, right, the conference, and was a very good keynote speaker, actually split, you were there, you got split between two days, and was very motivating. Just a question to Todd, if I'm allowed to, could we get that speaker for opening day? I don't want the cost, but...
You might want to ask the cause.
I know, that's, yeah, that's, I'm just going to say that, is that...
We could show Tom's video.
That's right.
I know we can't use district money, but if, I don't know what...
He was really good, though, but we...
He, he's out of Roseville.
Does he?
He does, yeah, it's great.
He's out of Roseville, but that, that would be, if he could talk an hour and a half, but, I don't know the cost, but...
Well, we had, we had a great opening speaker last time, and, I mean, that's things that we're looking for all the time, but you're right, that, he was very, very good.
I have two possible suggestions. One, we might think about having a combined opening day with a neighboring district who might be willing to share the cost with a dynamic speaker.
That's what we did last year.
And secondly, at one point, we were discussing having a, a board book for this year, which to this point hasn't gone anywhere. I would suggest we think about using the book Trust that our keynote speaker wrote, particularly considering that rebuilding trust between board members and the board and the community is a primary concern.
That's true. He was selling books there.
I bought one, and a DVD.
So any other items of information from the school board members?
Also, Mr. Chair, this idea I'll just throw out, and, wouldn't have to be discussed in the other time, but, oh, the exhibits. I talked, with my background, I have a master's in architecture, I talked to a lot of architectural firms dealing with building security, and, you know, with what went on, the shooting in mid-December, and a lot of these architectural firms are really up on that, and all they work with schools and prisons and other governmental buildings. I was just wondering if, this would be kind of strange, but if we could form a building security committee? As I talked to them, I didn't obligate the board or nothing, but I wonder if we could, you know, a building security...
Mr. Seska.
...committee to talk about, you know, people like, we would have the police chief on it, and, and...
Yeah, I think that's a very good idea, I just wanted to let you know that I'm going up to Stillwater to meet with Al Tim, who's a nationally recognized security consultant, just to visit about the very thing that you're talking about. I think it's a great idea to look at that whole piece, to keep us up to speed on our security piece, and, and our comprehensive emergency prot протocall. Well, we can start that, it's just a committee that we can assign, I don't know if you need any formal board approval for that.
Because that would, we just got done with committee assignment, but I'm just saying, because that just came up, and, and a lot of these architectural firms could look at our facilities at no cost and find options.
Well, yeah, and I think we've, we've, Todd and I have at least mentioned in some future date, having sort of a safety discussion in a, within a work session, that could be the place to start, and then think about whether or not we want to form a formal committee out of that or not, or, or should Kevin and others have thoughts on what's already thought about?
That's why I brought it up.
We already have many safety protocols in place, so it's something we've already thought about, and to start there.
This is where, where I talk to the person, where if somebody comes in, you can actually confine to a spot.
All right, Superintendent Report, Mr. Seska.
Yeah, first of all, happy birthday to Kline Carter Noodle, it hurts her birthday tomorrow, I believe, so happy birthday, Kline.
Can we ask an age, or not?
No, I don't think we can do that.
I'm sure that violates the law.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I didn't say that.
I do agree with the comments about the MSBA conference, it was very, I, I thought it was very good, the sessions I attended were very informative as well. Thank you also to Sedexo, who had that dinner that evening that they put on for the board members that wanted to go there, Mr. Olson and I both attended that, and I thought that was wonderful to have them celebrate their contract with our school district and others, and we had a good time. The, I can't read my writing. Oh, AAC meeting, that's the Advisory Council for Southeast Service Co-op, which I'm a member, or which I'm on that board, for the Southeast Service Co-op, which serves a lot of the southeast area schools. It's similar to the South Central Co-op, which is the Mankato area, we're a member of both. But we're looking at software that the Southeast Service Co-op could buy, that would do some of our teacher evaluations, and help out with the laws, and, and help us, guide us through that process. One of the proposals is from the Mods for EDU, which we use currently for administrative and our teacher evaluation, so they're going to be choosing one here pretty soon, they have, the next step is to now have the, the different vendors come and present to the, to the committee, and we get to then choose which one of those softwares would work best for our districts. Spoke at the Golden Kiawanas last week, and had a good time with them. And now I am starting to meet weekly with the Fable Daily News, and also I'm on a monthly schedule now with KDHL to talk about all the good things that are happening in the school district, so. And then also FCTV is, we're working on getting a, a schedule to have me and, and any other guests on there as well. So, and finally, I want to just thank the board for your efforts into making this a cohesive school board, where we're going to be moving forward and doing some great things in the future, so I appreciate that.
Any questions for Mr. Seska? All right, then, last item on the agenda before we adjourn, some dates to remember. February fourth, at five thirty PM, work session at the district office, yes, that is one week from today. February eleventh, at seven thirty AM, Finance meeting in the district office. February nineteenth, at five thirty PM, School Board Retreat at the district office. February twenty-fifth, at four forty-five PM, Curriculum Committee meeting at the district office. And finally, February twenty-fifth, at six thirty PM, Regular Board Meeting at the City Hall Council Chambers. Any other dates to remember? They're not on here? Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Have a motion, is there...